Wow, I know you're a telephone call on half the way from House. It's got them.
Really?
Yeah. Thank you, too, you could make sure that I was calling easily on that time.
I would know when he sounds like he starts to laugh, you know, the courage.
Well, you just don't like what she's saying, so.
Yeah, one of the heated all the way to the trash, and I was like, something kind of driving. You know.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would call the meeting to order here of the East Porter County School Board this ninth day of June two thousand and twenty-five. Could we all please rise in the moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First time on the agenda this evening for opening items, we have natural helpers spotlight. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Brand Leslie, Mrs. Burke, and Mr. Fields to talk a little bit about natural helpers.
Thank you. Natural helpers is a program that existed in all three East Porter county schools at various times for the last few decades. Unfortunately, it had vanished and disappeared for various assorted reasons, whether it was personalities that had led that extracurricular club at the campuses or funding. What natural helpers is, it's a capacity building program with high school age students to help them become better listeners, better friends, better peers, and aware of some of the struggles that their peers are going through. This past year, Mrs. Brand Leslie and Mrs. Burke and I, as well as the other secondary principals, have talked about the mental health needs and the overall culture and climate of our buildings, and how can we enhance that, better support it, and find ways in order to, again, build capacity in our students. And so with that, these two ladies went and attended the Valparaiso High School Natural Helpers Retreat and participated in that. A valuable experience, brought back lots of ideas that that particular local school corporation does. And since then, we've been kind of putting our own twist on it and looking at a way to bring it back and revitalize it here in East Porter. So, again, basically, it is students identifying peers that are empathetic, good listeners, treat others with kindness, dignity, and respect on a regular basis, and it takes them on a retreat and, again, builds capacity in them so that they can enhance those skills. And then when they come back into the environment, they, again, are another set of ears. They're a friendly face. They're a set of ears that can listen and understand, obviously, what their limitations are and what resources are available in the school in order to best support kids. Another aspect of it that we've been looking at is not only training and building that capacity in the high school kids, but then also having them do some bystander leadership and support of the middle school kids. Because too oftentimes, the adults in the building, as much as we care and want to be there and be supportive, sometimes we're that teacher on Charlie Brown to the kids, and they don't always hear from an adult. And we all know that from early ages, kids look to high school students, whether they're wearing an athletic uniform, or whether they're performing at a play or a concert or something like that, and they idolize them. They look up to them and say, someday, I want to be that person. And so with that, we're hoping that that can have that same impact when it comes to being good listeners, being supportive, being bystander leaders with the younger kids as well.
My standard leadership is a evidence-based practice, that there are lots of, there are lots of studies that show it works. I'm old enough to be some of these kids' grade mothers, right? And so if I talk to them, they're saying, oh, well, how do you know? You didn't grow with cell phones, right? You don't have to deal with things that we deal with today. So my standard leadership is really important. And our kids, the schools at the age we're looking at, middle school to high school, they've missed out on some of those years due to the pandemic, missed out on some of that building of resilience. So if they look up to their, I would say, peers or their older peers in the high school, I think that it's the listen, right, more so. And they might know a little bit more about the community than someone like me that's coming from outside of the community. I have seen twenty-five percent, just a little under, twenty-five percent of our school. It's a big number. And a lot of those kids, there are things that I talk to them about, that other kids could talk to them about. A lot of it is relationship issues. This person has said this about me, what should I do? And they, you know, they're coming to me for those things. They're coming to me to mediate with friends. And those things I love to help with, but when I have a crisis, sometimes two or three, and that gets put to the wayside, and those kids are not being taken care of, so.
I would say that I have, like, the same type of issues across the board at Morgan Township and at Couts as well. I think that something that this program could really do well in is also, like, what she was bringing up, like, if we had the kids, if we were to train them and have them help us, especially like when we have to talk about bullying and stuff, it's not just coming from us, it's like coming from a place where those other kids, like, hey, I've had this happen to me, too, and like, they will be able to understand it more, and like, it's not just us talking to them, if that makes sense, so. But I think across the board, this could be really positive for all of them. And I know that, of course, this isn't going to solve everything, right? But if they have other people that they can feel supported and not be a nonjudgmental, like, space for them, like, it could be very valuable, I think.
Yeah, and we're also training other adults, the kids, not the first retreat, I think with the second one and then from them on. Those adults that get voted by the kids, hey, I think these adults in this school would like to come to this. And they also get the same training because, you know, sometimes the student may not know me, but may have a favorite teacher, and go to that teacher and then get referred to me, right? So that's important as well. So it's also giving staff some help as well.
So what does this look like? In the past, each school had their own separate and unique program, and perhaps that's a reason why it fell by the wayside and didn't continue. What we're proposing and what we're wanting to make you aware of is that we would like to do this as an East Porter retreat. So, again, bring some likeness together within our schools and identify those kids. The first retreat would happen in the fall, in which, at this point in time, it can either be a campus retreat, or typically, the retreats are going off campus. I'm old enough that I participated in the retreat when it was at Couts twenty-five years ago, and it was down and around the Turkey Run area. Usually, it's a two-day retreat. But the first retreat would be building capacity in that first group of student leaders in the fall. Once they're trained, then they become part of the training for their peers as well. And then we would do another retreat in the spring, and then from that point forward, it would be a spring retreat each year. And we would look at having representatives from the freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior classes from Couts, Washington, and Morgan each year participate in that, and again, build that capacity within the corporation and on each campus in order to have a sustainable program.
What kind of numbers would you be looking at that you think will be interested in the first round?
Well, it would be, first of all, in order to get the names, we would survey the students and ask them who they believe in their classes are their student leaders that are empathetic, that are good listeners, that have bystander leadership skills and things like that. The first year, I think we're talking eight per campus.
Who decides who the eight are? Is that voted on by the students?
Students, they're nominated by the students, and then once the nomination list is put together, then voted on by the students. And so it is a retreat supervised and organized by adults initially, but then, as you build that capacity and get those student leaders, then those student leaders are part of that planning and that hosting of that retreat each year.
Those students would have to be eligible to go on retreat, you know, with the grades and things like that, and be here as well.
When we went, we went to Camp Tecumseh, and I don't foresee us maybe going there because it's huge, but I'm not saying that we couldn't get to that point, but I'm saying, like, maybe for the first two retreats, like, that we could go somewhere smaller, so we can kind of tailor it to how we need, if that makes sense. So, like, it doesn't have to be just like what Valpo did, but it is nice to have, like, a reference point.
And the cost per student in order to take care of accommodations, meals, and supplies was about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars per student. And of course, if there are students that are nominated and are in need of financial support, then that's up to the building principals in order to seek that funding from the community or other sources. Because we don't want to prevent somebody that has been identified by their peers as that student to not have an opportunity to participate.
I'm old enough to remember natural helpers when I was a student in East Porter, and I thought it was a good program.
Dr. Casey, looking for a motion to approve?
Not at all. This is just informative. It is already approved by the district. As a matter of fact, we even have a stipend designated in our bargaining agreement for the future campuses for later. It's being that it has not been active for a while. We just wanted to highlight program, keep the board informed of our intent to revitalize it. And then, because later in the agenda, I'm going to be talking to you about additional student services, and just the theme, what's on that theme, but it's important. As a teacher, I had an opportunity to be involved with natural helpers as well. And so I just wanted to make sure that we kept working on.
Are we more so needed now than ever before?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How we actually, part of the opening items on the agenda of the public input, on any agenda.
Nobody signed us.
So I want to give the public the chance to speak, if so desired. Okay, same agenda. Next item, items on the agenda, the consent agenda, and I would make a recommendation that we consider the consent agenda items A, B, and C, the consent agenda, item D separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of item two A, approval of amended business meeting, item two B, financial matters payroll, and item two C, financial matters claims list.
There is a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved. This is Terpstra, the second, this is Moore, for the approval of consent agenda, item two A, two B, and two C. Any comments, questions? Same agenda, a call to question, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, item two A, approval amended business meeting, item two B, financial matters payroll, and item two C, financial matters claim list, signify by raising your hand. Motion passes four zero. Next item is a, would be item two D, approval of personality. Your motion for item two D, approval of personality.
I would have some, I would like to have some discussion before we move on this motion. In this motion, we're talking about contracts renewal for a lot of our secondary and transportation, all the different district-wide locations, and it's a two-year contract, which was a surprise to me, and maybe it's, maybe I'm not reading my stuff enough soon enough. But in the past, we've done one-year contracts based on the fact that if a person's doing a good job year to year, they're going to get renewed. And if you tie yourself into a two-year contract, there have been experiences in the past where we've had to get out of two-year contracts. And so I feel like everybody here deserves the contract offers that are being made to them, except I'm not willing to make it a two-year contract. I'm only willing to make it a one-year contract, and I'm willing to listen to debate on the other side of that, but we've had to buy contracts out in the past, and I'm not feel crazy about that idea, so. The other thing that I would say is there's only four, it is a major change. We have never, we have never offered two-year contracts there. There are only four of us here tonight. I fear that I would vote no if we offer it as a two-year contract. If we offer it as a one-year contract, come back and revisit it, and if the board can convince me why we should make it two-year, that we need to pass the contract so everybody knows they have a contract for next year. But that's my logic, is four board members here, it is a major shift from what we've ever done. Any other comments? So you're making that, I'm just talking right now. I'm just talking, all right? You have any other, well, things to say, things to say?
If we did, if we did vote for the one-year tonight, and then when we have the rest of the board members, could we then change it then, or no?
I'm asking to revisit it at that point. Is that possible?
Anything's possible.
Well, I'm just saying, from what's been negotiated.
In order to get through, I would ask that the board at least consider a one-year. That's simply, so that we can.
Contracts that people.
Yes.
Right. So that would, I would make a motion to amend the personnel report for those who one-year contracts to be reviewed as to whether we make them two-year contracts when the full board is here. That's my motion. Okay, good.
I will second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mrs. Terpstra. Any other discussion?
I think that's a good idea.
And it's no reflection, we have two secondary principals here. We have, you guys are doing a great job. It's, if you don't, when we're talking about money and long-term money, I'm fairly conservative. So, that's where I'm at.
Well, it's been moved to amend the personnel report in the area of contracts for the district directors, chief of the central office, Couts, Morgan, principal assistant principals, as well as Washington County, also including the athletic directors. This time, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of the personnel report as amended, signify by raising a hand. And that motion passes four zero. Next item.
Let's understand, we do have some of these people with us this evening.
Well, let's see who they are then.
So I'm having personnel report. One of the changes that we are looking at is the switching of positions at Couts High School, from our Mr. DeFreeze being the principal to assistant principal. And Ms. Blakely going from assistant principal to principal. They are both with us this evening. Mr. Derek Milankopf, who was proposed to be the basketball coach at Morgan Township, is here with us tonight with, looks like his two strapping young boys, assistant coaches, so this is very serious. And then Mr. Robert Duffy, who is, was proposed as AP math teacher at Morgan Township as also.
Good school.
That's a nice.
Okay, great, thanks, welcome. Any words of wisdom you want to share with the board?
No, well, welcome.
He likes to be asked, he's a boss.
All right, and everybody's comfortable with the switch?
I believe Mr. DeFreeze had a countdown. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the action item, starting with three A, approval of service agreement with Neola for policy development.
So over the past couple of months, board has asked about the usage of Neola, and so in front of you is what it would cost to switch over to Neola instead of using ISBA. The transition cost would be twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and Neola would be a three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. So that service agreement is for you, is letter A.
I would like to have discussion before a motion again, as possible. Mr. Martin, it's always possible. You always have such good to do.
Well, as I read, I read through the contract twice and took notes the second time, and one of the things that bothers me about it is that they have a lot of hours. If they haven't gone over every single policy that we already have in place and approved it on their own templates, then they won't defend it if it were ever challenged. They have to have also gone through it. And I know how many hours and hours have been spent on policies already, and in a year when we're looking for the fact that state income is, to the schools, is less, and I know that we've had good recommendations from our superintendent and from ISBA, and we've taken the process that route. I have, there's no way I can support this. It's thirty thousand dollars wasted. I've also, in order for that to happen, someone would have to go through each one of those policies with somebody from Neola, which means either our superintendent or assistant superintendent has to repeat the same thing that has been done for the last twenty years. So I'm going to be note, the motion is to approve. I would make a motion not to approve it, would be my motion.
I believe that we, firstly, we'd have to have a motion for the approval, and a second, and then any further discussion?
I make a motion to table it.
I would just rather say yea or nay on this one, move forward or not. Any other comment? Well, if you're gonna, if you need a motion to approve, I'll wait to see if you have a motion to approve, and I'll vote. Do I hear a motion for approval of the service agreement with Neola for policy development?
What happens if there's no motion? We can bring it up next month?
If there's no motion, the motion dies.
So we can make a non-motion next month?
That would be to the discretion of the board, but at this particular point in time, if there is no motion on that particular agenda item, the agenda item will just die.
Go away. Do I hear any motion?
Can I make a motion to table it until next month?
You could make that motion, certainly. Is that what you're doing?
I do think the rest of the board, yes.
You're making a motion to table. Is there a second? Is there a second to table the motion? Same agenda, the motion dies for a lack of a second, going back to the main motion. Is there approval of the service agreement? Is there a motion to approve the service agreement with Neola for policy development? No motion? No motion? The motion dies, sir. Dr. Casey. Next item on the agenda is action item three B, approval of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six student handbook.
So in front of you is the handbook that we are presenting so that we can put it up with our student registration that we parents are aware of. There's been a couple of modifications, one of them has to do with the attendance, the attendance laws, basically, it's just been updated to make sure that we are in compliance with us, the new legislation, just tweaks that with our drop here.
Is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six student handbook? Moved by Mrs. Terpstra, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and Mrs. Moore, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, then, call to question, all those in favor of item three B, approval of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six student handbook, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes four zero.
Next in front of you is the athletic handbook. Most changes have to do with someone in unclear language that had to do with student discipline for substance usage, and just to make sure that it aligns with our handbooks.
Thank you, I think we've all read through that. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six athletic handbook? So moved by Mr. Martin, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any discussion, questions, comments?
The one major change must be the fact that seniors can, I mean juniors can now transfer on access or athletic reasons as opposed to, it always used to have to be academic reasons.
Correct. IHSA law changed that rule. That is, yes, thank you, that was another change that was in there in regard, in addition to the change in the percentage of season. Yes, IHSA and legislation made the change for that.
Amendment any time in their high school, correct?
Any other questions?
Prior to the end of their junior year.
Any other questions, comments? Same agenda, the call to question, all those in favor of approval of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six athletic handbook, signify by raising your hand. That motion passes four zero. Next item is approval of transfer student number.
Being that we are an open enrollment school, Indiana code requires the board to pass what the transfer numbers could be. So in front of you, I have the number that we try to maintain in our different grade level classes, and then depending on the number of students that we have that live in the district, that opens up the number that we able for transfer. We do hold two to three positions depending on the grade level for kids that may come and enroll and move into our district throughout the school year, but these numbers are the same numbers that we have had over the past three years.
How many transfer students have we had this year?
I do not have that number off my, but I know that we netted probably fifty-ish. I know we had over a hundred, but the net was too positive.
And are the integrated classes continuing to grow?
A little bit. Last, I heard we were closer to thirty as opposed to the twenty-sixth. But we also know that when registration and before the first day of school, in the past, we've seen up to seven. in the past, we've seen up to seven, seven or so that come in. Last minute, especially at Washington Township, they're a little slower.
I think probably over the years, that's, we've only had to turn away a couple of times. Is that true? We've never held a lottery yet.
We have not. We have, we have not had to hold the lottery yet. But if we do get to that point and there's more than there is a lottery that is held. However, we have had turned, had to turn a handful of kids out. But mostly, mostly that's after school has started, not during, not in the summer. But after school has start, started, yes, we have had to turn kids out. When she was way at the elementary and I think there numbered like two at the middle school, which is not as flexible as the high school. The high school, we've seen, we see some of our smaller class sizes. In general, creative, like flexing required classes, they run a little bit higher. But once they get into the sophomore, juniors and seniors, we've got much capacity there. Any other questions? Then I'm looking for a motion for approval of the transfer student numbers. I want to approve the transfer of the student members.
No second there.
Mr. Martin, make a motion. Mrs. Terpstra, second. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of transfer student numbers, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is item B, approval of American Fidelity FSA forfeitures.
So through American Fidelity, we offer our student accounts to our employees. So when they don't use those funds, the company refunds them to us. They give us ways that we can use that money. One of the options is to give it back to the people who are consuming those plans. So we are asking your approval to do that.
If they don't use it, they lose it. But even good corporation that we are, you get that money, then we just take, give it back to.
We can't give it directly to the person who contributed. A lot of times, those people who aren't in cooperation anymore, what we give to everybody that's just paying that. So here.
Do I hear a motion for approval of American Fidelity FSA forfeitures?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item B, approval of American FSA forfeitures, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next on the agenda is item F, approval to forgive uncollectible debt.
So I have given you some spreadsheets of some students that we have been trying to collect from and have not been able to, most, majority of them have been since collections already last year. And so it is asking permission to write off that, that, that we're going to be able to get it.
Do I hear a motion for approval to forgive uncollectible debt?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Moore. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any questions, comments?
I'm just curious. Is there any legal contributions to anybody that doesn't, no matter how big bill gets?
No.
The only thing that we can do is take them in small parts.
And is, is there a cutoff point at which we're willing to do that? We haven't ever, we haven't ever decided one, correct?
Policy says to send the collections, so we didn't collect many. Maybe one last year. So we're at this point again for this year. That's all policy. I'm saying that what we do get charged to try to collect.
What, what is the difference between the amount last year and this year?
This year was, they were here because we hadn't done it. And everything was pretty blocked and collections. And they were about last year. This is just this last year.
We anticipated, we actually anticipated the amounts to be, to be declining, being that we're no longer charging.
Extra. But they're not, most of my damage or what? Except when I see Chromebook, that's Chromebook damage.
Yes. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item F, approval to forgive uncollectible debt, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is G, approval of NIESC food contracts.
So these are kids done the procurement bits for our food service for next year. So these are the bits that you're. Our general supplier, which is JFAS, and then commercial for, so our out part items.
So moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item G, approval of, how you pronounce that?
NISIC.
NISIC food contract, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is item H, approval to purchase equipment for advanced manufacturing programs. So this past winter, Mr. Littenberger, who teaches at, we shared a little bit of healthy advanced manufacturing class. We were looking at, I mean, we asked the board to approve the RDC grant that we were going to analyze, help pay for some of the equipments. And then the RDC is also approved, that takes a grant now coming back. So that we are crossing our fingers out in our eyes. Now we, both grants, the grants have been approved by both our school and RDC. It's time to purchase them, and yet it's over $50,000. We're just asking the board to approve the purchase. So a lot of, it's about saying much, right?
What's that?
It's a lot of words and didn't really say. Moved by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. On that contract, it said at the bottom that there's a 3.5% fee if you pay by credit card. So can we pay that by check so we don't get?
Oh, we're paying it through invoice.
Okay.
Good question. We, we pay, we pay very little with credit cards. Any other questions or comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item H, approval to purchase equipment for advanced manufacturing programs, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is item I, approval to dispose of spare bus. So in front of the board, I was gonna say, this, this, Washington Township has an unspoken mascot that has been sitting in the parking lot for a couple of guests. And it has not been, it has already been removed from the bus replacement. Basically, we held on to it to utilize as many parts as we could off of it so that we could get the value, much value out of the bus that we have. Basically, we have taken everything that we can use out of that bus. And we are asking for permission just to scrap of the scrap iron. I, I know Mr. Fields would be disappointed and, no. He's an entrepreneur, he wants a lot of shit. He can be a disaster. It looks terrible. So moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any other comments, questions? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval to dispose of spare bus, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Approval, the next item is J, approval of bus replacement bill.
Hey, this is our opportunity to go out for bid. We went out for bid and are looking to purchase two new buses. We're going with a 78 passenger and a special needs wheelchair 54 passenger bus. Same request we made on our last purchase. We just repeated that. About a 5% increase is what the cost has, has changed to. Still looking at a year and a half, two years for delivery on that. But we keep the process moving so that we can keep our fleet ready to go. And we, you know, have an increased need with, with special needs transportation. So that's why we're going with that additional bus again.
Do I hear a motion for approval of a bus replacement bill?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Moore. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any other questions or comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of a bus replacement bill, signify by raising a hand. And that motion carries five, zero. Four, four zero. They're not four. That's our mystery guest here. Okay, the next item is item K, approval posting for a sixth student service position. So as was mentioned earlier today, and something that we have been, had conversations. Currently, we have full-time social workers at five, four of our buildings. And then we have a halftime that goes between Calms Middle School, High School and Morgan Middle School, High School. And in, in having conversations with our building level, with administrators and to try to help meet some of the needs of our students, mental health, we are requesting the permission to advertise so that we can have a full-time individual at each of our buildings. You know, it was, we had shared the person with Washington accounts up until this past year. And Mr. Fields and I have had multiple conversations. And it's just been, the need has grown. And so we are asking the board for permission to have a full-time person at each of our schools. So moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any other questions? And I'll call the question. All those in favor of posting for a sixth student service position, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is item L, approval to designate administration health insurance plan as the district's $1 default option. So currently, our administrators get insurance for a dollar and they have the option to go with any of our PPO plans. And so the insurance trust came up with a different program last year. And it's called Assuris model, which is not necessarily, doesn't have a deductible. It's more of a copay type of program. And so my recommendation is that all administrators, including myself, if they want to continue the dollar insurance, to be moved to the PPO plan, or not, sorry, the Assuris plan. If they would like to remain on their current plan, they would have the right to do so. It would just be at the same rate that the teachers, that the teachers receive. Obviously, in doing that, we are estimating us $62,268 in savings in that plan too tonight. I'm just asking for that. But I will ask the board, if we're looking at having conversations about changes in their contracts and that. And when we look at reviewing the compensation, which we will do after teacher bargaining, being that we are moving them, we also have a couple of people that might be willing to come off of the plan if there is a big potential, just something for the board to consider a second of that. That is not for tonight's conversation, but just as you're going forward. I know that was something that I put in my recommendation for your consideration. But as of right now, I'm just asking the board to approve the administrative dollar plan to be insured. Do I hear a motion for approval to designate administration health insurance plan as the district's $1 default option?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Moore. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any other comments or questions? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item L, approval to designate administrative health insurance plan as the district's $1 default option, signify by raising a hand. And that motion passes for zero. Next item is item M, approval to dispose of zero value of technology items. So in front of the board, we are asking permission to declare these technology items zero. As you know, there's been a large purchase to upgrade and update teacher devices and other things throughout the district. So as we are replacing them, we are looking to recycle what's been used in product date pieces. Do I hear a motion for approval of disposal of zero value of technology items?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any questions, comments?
What, what do we actually do with them? We trade them back in?
Not these items. They're too old. We don't have, they don't have any value.
So they just go.
They're, they're recycled appropriately.
Any other questions, comments? Then I'll call the question. All those, approval to dispose of zero value of technology items, signify by raising a hand. And that motion passes for zero. Next item is N, approval of Morgan Township overnight volleyball camp. Looking for the board to approve as proposed. So moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any other questions, comments? If none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of Morgan Township overnight volleyball camp, signify by raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is approval of Morgan Township overnight basketball tournament. Looking for the board to approve the girls' basketball as presented.
I make a motion to approve the Morgan Township overnight basketball tournament.
Moved by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any comments? Have we gone to Central Hall? So that's the one? Is it been at Central Hall? We both, I do not know that. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of item L, approval of Morgan Township overnight basketball tournament, signify by my raising a hand. That motion passes for zero. Next item is item P, approval of couches, overnight band and choir field trip. Looking to ask the board to approve what has presented. Do I hear a motion for approval of couches, overnight band and choir field trip?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of couches, overnight band and choir field trip, signify by raising your right hand. And that motion passes for zero. So since we are on field trips and activities and all that kind of stuff, I would like to ask the board, and this is not an agenda item on there, I'm just putting it out there. We have been, our couch baseball team comes success this weekend. And so we do have the opportunity to move forward. And I am asking the board if the team is fortunate enough to make it to the state tournament. We're gonna have it working before that meeting. So I would ask the board to grant me permission to authorize an overnight stay or if they need it, for semi-stay or stays. So moved.
Second.
Oh, give me a chance. Moved by Mr. Martin, and second by Mrs. Terpstra for the approval for the overnight stay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing them, I'll call that question. I guess we'll call that.
That's Q, Q one. Q one.
Q two.
All those in favor of approval of the Calhoun's overnight, when they win. Signified by raising a hand, that motion passes four, zero. Next item is Q, board packets and emails.
I would like to make a motion to table this until next month when there are more important.
Do I hear a second for tabling? Second, remove by Mrs. Moore, to table the Q, board packets emails. It's been seconded by Mrs. Terpstra. Questions or comments? All in favor of tabling the board packets emails, signified by raising a hand. And that motion passes four, zero. Then we have closing items. Item A under closing items, for A is board member discussion. Anybody have any board member discussion? Anything you'd like to share? But.
We're super proud of our Calhoun's middle school team, and we wish them luck this Saturday.
Yes, we are. Graduating. I, I thought the three graduations went very well. It's always impressive to me to see the future plans of the students, whether it be college or military, or just entering into the workforce. But I was, I was impressed. But they all were running very well and we have some great, we have a lot of, all are great students. And then we had this board and administrative planning session, retreat executive session. And thanks to Dr. Case for cooking breakfast for the group. But again, I continue to be impressed with how organized and dedicated our administrative staff and directors are.
I was impressed with each of the student speakers. I, I had told Dr. Case and several board members, I had two grandchildren graduate from a school of 560 in Alabama. They had nine speakers, nine school student speakers at that event, all right? That the kids picked. And I would put up the speeches that our kids made any day against what I heard there. I appreciate that we do that. I, you know, it used to be years ago, we only did the student spotlight really in one place. We, one of the things that I encourage, that I would encourage secondary principals, I know you get tired of getting ready for your own graduation, but attending the other ones, you see the things that really go well. And we're all giving out flowers because we learned that from Morgan, I think. And.
Was Morgan.
Just seeing, seeing kids honored and having their parents stand to be honored is, seems like a very small thing that we can do with, which is a really big thing for them. And having them write their own, or having someone help them write what is said about them. You know, it was, it was just, it was fun to kid, to watch the kids' reactions and to see what they're doing. I think we probably have more kids going to BU than they were, we have in that maybe ever. And, but it's just fun. Also kids that are in the trades or in the military. And I also wouldn't compliment the updates by the different staffs at our board retreat. It was fun. I come home from that, inspired always that we're doing things well. And it's good to see and to hear what each of you are doing. So thank you for doing that, taking the time out to do that. And Dr. Case for putting it together, even though it taken was a little greasy.
And he has the ASL interpreter at Washington, and I know that was very appreciated.
Yeah.
They were the top 10 too.
Yep, yep.
So, keep up the good work. I'll have item B, additional items from the superintendent.
So first thing I want to address are the donations that do not hit the threshold of $1,000 for our board approval. However, they still have impacts inside of our schools. So the Hartland Christian Center had a $200 donation to Mrs. Stressa Smith, going for our athletics, softball fundraiser at Morgan Township. And then Chris Burkey, the anonymous individual vote donated $100 towards the Calhoun's volleyball. The other item that I just want to talk briefly about is, Mrs. Niemeyer's and I have been working with Big utility to look for some kind of direction in regards to funding. The Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 1001 are making a significant change in the landscape of property taxes and our ability for, for our capability in receiving revenues that will be coming in there. We are anticipating significant reduction in those revenues because of the additional tax credits and the formation of how the extra reductions are going to be taking place. She and I even sat today trying to figure out a little bit more on the impact of how farmland is going to do. However, over the next few years, the reduction is going to be done in percentages. And so I still don't have an estimate number on that particular part. But over the past few years, we have been utilizing our general obligation bonds to help supplement our operating fund so that we have been able to reduce the amount of transfer from education to the operation fund, which, because we're really trying to bolster and increase our salary. We have seen significant increases in utilities and services, 20%. So as operating costs continue to go up, we're estimating approximately like a difference in the next year or so in our operating, a reduction of $750,000, if not more. I would go through and do a rough calculation of the new home credit, because that's about $300 a home. And correcting Mrs. Niemeyer's, I believe we fed about 54, 55,000 homes.
That's 100.
55,000, thank you. Yeah, that'd be a lot, it'd be two zeros. But even in doing so with that tax credit and the different ones, you take 5,500 times $300, so it's going to be an impact. And that doesn't even count the changes that's going to happen with the tax caps, the changes in the assessed valuations. And the biggest part that's going to be a challenge for us is the conversation that we have been able to have with our communities about maintaining and, or if not maintaining, lowering tax rates. So back in 2020, we had right around a 94 cents tax rate. Right now, we're sitting just under 82 cents. And so we have been able, we have reduced our tax rate while maintaining the general obligation bonds to help offset some of that operation. So we're going to be coming to the board and start looking, I know we initially talked about maybe doing some solar and some roofing, but as the board looks at creating a strategic plan, I think it would be in our best interest to scale that back a little bit to see exactly the direction where the board wants to go. So what we will be looking to propose over the next, how we can start having more conversation at our next board meeting, is doing something more like a $5 million general obligation fund that will take care of some of the roofing challenges that we have, the HVAC, like the chillers, out of that bond. We can also help take care of buses so that we're not having to pay that out of operation because as that operation fund starts to decline, or we're going to supplement it because I really don't want to have to transfer more from the education. Because we also know that we could be looking at a education fund decrease as well. With, Mr. Martin, you asked me about our kindergarten, we know that we graduated over 184 seniors this year. Well, as of right now, we barely have 100, maybe 105 kindergarteners, which is a decline in 75 kids if we're, because we're graduating more than what we have in our district. So with that decline in student enrollment, and you know, the state has touted a 2% increase on there, if you look at what they're anticipating for us, even with that increase, the increase is basically right around $360,000, which is what we collected in a separate payment from the state last year for textbook rental. So when you take into consideration, you remove that textbook rental money out, and then you also take the reduced enrollment that we're looking at, we're looking at a lesser amount received from the state for this next year as a price for that. So we will see a potential reduction in our education fund, potential reduction in our operation fund. And so we are looking at coming to the bond to also help and say, yes, we'll also see a reduction in debt service. Because our debt service is also controlled or has something to do with the changes in Senate Bill 1 in there.
So the credit is not, the debt service fund is not protected from the tax credit that they're getting, it is protected from the circuit breaker, but not the tax credit.
Which they, we do not believe that legislatures, legislators took that into consideration when they were passing this law. And so that's something that they will have to be revising.
In the, I guess I would ask, in the, in school meetings or in, in any of the meetings, was ISBA following that? Because that's pretty big. And, and they didn't take any of their input into account, or what? Because debt service has always been protected. You get any debt that you have, you gotta pay somehow. You did the best of times, you could do the worst, but at least we're.
And because of the conservative nature that we have had here at East Quarter, our cash balances are okay. We are in a much better place than a lot of school districts. And conversations that I've had with the superintendent, some conversations that Mrs. Niemeyer's has had with business managers, they're much more dire and they have bigger challenges financially than what we.
Near future, but.
Yes.
But the effects of the long-term plan are, that's my view, so. Hard pressed.
We have a lot of time, three, two, three years will be okay. Dividing things, stay where they're.
Yeah.
But every time they get together, you never know how that's going to play out.
Thanks for the report, good positives. It does kind of, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. We could stay all night, but. Move by Mrs. Terpstra, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. All those in favor of returning for the evening, signified by raising a hand, and that motion passes four, zero. Thank you for your attendance tonight. Have a great rest of the week.